And we have our second pair of candidates for the Board of Education Public Forum for Howard County Public School System. My name is Mai Hall and I will be your moderator for tonight. So, let me start off by doing some guidelines for tonight's candidates. I will introduce your name and district when I share my screen. Each candidate will get two minutes to answer each question and you will take turns. So I will call on one to go first and then switch. And then for the next question, the person who went second will not go first. We'll just take turns like that. At thirty seconds, you will see Beth Stolti hold up a red sign that says thirty seconds to indicate that your time has almost run out. And you will have, after some individual and general questions, you will each have two minutes towards the end to share some closing remarks. So now I will share my screen and introduce the audience to our candidates. Beth, can you see my screen? Awesome, thank you. All right, welcome, welcome. It is October twenty first, two thousand and twenty. The Howard County Public School System Special Education Candidate Forum. Sponsored by two hosts. The first is CCAC, the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee, who advises the Howard County Public School System about special education and students with disabilities. We collaborate with community disability advocacy groups to improve the education and the lives of all of our students with disability in Howard County, Maryland. We have approximately fifty-nine thousand students in the school system. About ten to eleven percent of them are students with IEPs or Individualized Education Plans. And another ten percent have five oh four plans. So that's, we're looking at a total of eighteen to twenty percent of our population with disabilities and special healthcare needs. The other host for tonight is the Howard County Autism Society, who is another disability advocacy organization within the county who provides supports and resources to parents of children with disabilities. Howard County Autism Society, or HCS, is a five oh one C three nonprofit organization. So, tonight we will be hearing from District Five, from Ms. Cindy Valencourt and Dr. Yun Liu. I would like to start off with a couple of individual questions. This first question is for Ms. Valencourt. Ms. Valencourt, you have discussed the quality of HCPSS special education services in the past. However, budget times have changed and reading outcomes have not improved, particularly for students with disabilities. How would you attempt to improve reading outcomes, knowing that funding is only going to decline?
Do you want to control the mute and unmute, or do you want us to?
Oh, you can.
Okay. Well, I don't really think that the, that the funding problems should interfere with actually teaching our students how to read. That's, that's a problem that goes beyond what the funding limitations are. It has always struck me that one of the things that we are actually pretty aware of what, of how to do is to teach kids how to read. So, the, the reading wars that we've experienced with the phonics versus whole language versus sight read words versus the arguments about whether dyslexia even exists, which I have a hard time understanding how that can continue to be an issue, don't really have as much to do with funding as they do philosophy. So, my first comment would be that I think it's, it's largely a, a problem of will and and effort to do a much better job teaching kids how to read than we have been doing. The, as far as the funding limitations, the the use of, the targeted use of resources is, is probably the answer to most of the problems around the reading instruction that we offer. We've used a, spent a lot of money on programs that set a kid in front of a computer screen and give them some seat time. And we kid ourselves that that's the same thing as teaching them how to read. So that, my biggest comment is that I don't really think that it is as much of a funding-driven problem as it is a philosophical and effort problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Liu, there are many brilliant people in the world who also have a disability. But there is a self-culture who may not believe that students with disabilities belong in advanced classes. How will you ensure that students with disabilities have access to GT, AP honors, and other rigorous coursework while still receiving IEP supports or five oh four accommodations?
Thank you for the question. This is a diverse world. So basically, every one of us have our own strengths and weaknesses. So we understand that for some students, they have disabilities, but they have their own strengths. They have their own interests. There are many, many brilliant scientists, artists, athletes, who may have certain disabilities, but it doesn't prevent them from excelling. Doesn't prevent them from pursuing their dreams. So I think for the students with disabilities, we need to encourage them, make them believe in themselves. Sometimes, it's difficult to try at first time. We all facing challenges. Take me as example, I'm a non-native speaker. When first came to the US, I barely spoke any English. So imagine for a student who are ESO student or a special ed student who are facing language barriers, reading barriers. Then we encourage them, let them try, be patient, have individualized teaching, just find some role models for them, because there are many, many people with disability, but they still make great contributions. So, I want to say let them believe in themselves. Confidence is so important, because none of us have never faced any challenges. It, it will never happen to anyone. So just keep trying, work hard, and also we provide support, the community. Don't discriminate anyone, don't discard anyone. At the same time, we need to tell ourselves that don't be discouraged by anyone, by anything. So I really think that the whole community need to welcome those students and encourage them. We need a very friendly and welcoming environment and will help them to believe themselves. Disability won't prevent them from being successful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we all gonna, are we both going to answer all of the questions, or are we all, we gonna just get different questions?
This next set, I'll answer, I'll ask one question and you both will take turns answering the same question. Yeah, those are just two individual ones.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the topic is return to school. We will have Ms. Valencourt answer first and then Dr. Liu. So, the accessibility of the curriculum during virtual learning is extremely challenging for many in the special education community, especially those with younger children and more significant needs. Parents are already seeing regression and seeing their child fall further and further behind their peers. What is your action plan for bringing these students back into the classroom?
I'm gonna leap to a conclusion that I, I hope is correct, that the school system is actually working on plans that they just haven't shared their thought processes with us, because I, I can't imagine that they haven't developed something that they're eventually going to roll out. The in the perfect, in a perfect world, in my opinion, they should be already bringing back students into the buildings, prioritizing the students who get specialized services that can't really be replicated on a, in a virtual setting. And the students who are unable to access their faith via online learning. The then they, they could be bringing back more and more students. And again, you know, after prioritizing those students, I would think that the most important group to bring back would be the younger ones, because the older kids are just inherently more prepared for individual effort and taking initiative and handling these things on their own. You know, provided they aren't handicapped with some other issues that are preventing them from accessing their, their education digitally. But the, I know that, that transportation continues to be an obstacle for how they are going to get students into the buildings. But I, I believe that they can, with the small groups, overcome that obstacle if that is something that they are determined to do. I don't think that the, the notion that I've been hearing so far, that they would be bringing them into the building so that they could then do their virtual learning with a babysitter makes a lot of sense. They, they need to get back to face-to-face instruction for the kids who need it the most. That two minutes?
Thank you. Dr. Liu?
I think that HCPSS should provide small group in-person instruction to students who need it. Because currently, if we look at Maryland and Howard County COVID- nineteen circulation data, it's still pretty low. So we need to closely monitor, and at the same time, we know that many students facing challenges during this virtual learning environment. And during summer, HCPSS sent out a survey, asking parents, teachers, and the staff about their input regarding in-person learning, hybrid, and fully virtual learning. I know many teachers, staff, and the parents, they mentioned they prefer in-person instruction. So I think HCPSS compare up those parents and teachers and the staff to bring those students back and give other parents a choice if they choose to stay virtual. Because by doing this, you can see that we limit to a small group of students. So, we don't have to concern about difficult to handle social distancing. And also, it's by choice, because the parents and the teachers and staff, they voluntarily participate in this in-person instruction. And also, this instruction need to be live, in-person teaching, not supervised group virtual learning. And HCS can also monitor closely and the teaching experience and then seek feedback. So it'd provide them opportunity to inform decision-making for the third and the fourth quarter. So I would recommend HCS to start this in-person training in the second term. Thank you.
Thank you. There are students with disabilities who also do not speak English and are really struggling with virtual learning. The superintendent keeps stating that HCPSS is working on plans, while other systems are bringing, other counties are bringing students back. What would you do to ensure that these students, who are able to comply with masks and social distancing protocols, do not fall far behind? We'll start with Dr. Liu first.
Language barrier is very challenging. On top of that, there's also culture barrier. So those students and their families are facing extra challenges compared with native speakers and compared with people who are familiar with the culture. So I really think that they are very vulnerable population and HCS should provide in-person instruction to them and also help them, because we need to reach out to those families and inform them the situation, see what type of help they need. Also, for those students, I think it may be helpful to have some people with, speak similar language and have similar cultural background to reach out to them. While I was, when my children at Tri-Straughes Elementary School, I served as parent ambassador. So basically, we reach out to new families who are immigrants and who are non-native speakers. So this way, we can help each other and then the parents also feel more comfortable, talk with us to express their concerns. Because when we speak English, it can be a big barrier for those families. They're not comfortable speaking English. Some don't barely knew English. Even though that some of them may know how to speak English, but they are afraid of expressing themselves because of a culture barrier. So I really think we need to reach out to them, find the people who speak the same language, understand the culture, really understand their needs, to see what prevent them, what is the barrier, and really help those students, because I'm also concerned about the four-by-four model. That's a gap. Yeah, time is up. Thank you.
Ms. Valencourt?
Um, well, I do think that the English language learners are, should be a part of the prioritized group. They, and any of them who are all, are also part of the special education program would, you know, then be an even higher priority. But on the I think that realistically, what we need to be doing is making arrangements for how we are going to catch these students up when they do get back to school. I don't think it's, it's realistic to think that there is not going to be regression and that there's not going to be lost learning and progress. I don't think that we should just accept that, you know, they need to be working and including the liaisons. You know, we have eighteen or twenty liaisons for folks who are, English language learners are new to the country. And they, they need to be actively involved in helping to get the students who are English language learners back into the buildings and making, and facilitating those efforts. But the school system needs to be making plans for how they are going to catch all of our different student groups up when they, when they are back into face-to-face learning or, you know, whatever is gonna constitute, go, things get back to normal. The again, I, I know that Dr. Maravano has been announcing that they are going to be doing these things. I, I feel frustrated that the same kind of thought process of, we're gonna keep working behind the scenes and then one day we're going to unveil something that we think is perfect. It has never worked before, but they seem to be doing it again. And I would like to see them actually implement a plan and let us know what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. These next couple of questions are going to be from a PowerPoint. So I'm gonna share my screen and Beth, do you see the word staffing? Thank you. There you go. Okay. So, thank you for watching and taking a look at our slides. I know with your background as a statistician, Dr. Liu, and with your background as an educator, Ms. Valencourt, that you're used to seeing numbers and data. So, I'm gonna throw a bunch of information at you and I hope that you can kind of glean the big ideas that you would like to share with us. So, looking at this graph, we see that the yellow bar is the number of additional special education teachers over previous years. Compare that to the number of aides. Some years, the number of aides goes up. But the number of additional K through twelve special education students always increases every year. Now, this is the number of addition, not an increase of. We know, and the graph only goes back to two thousand and seventeen. So, we know from fiscal year thirteen through eighteen, over that five years, that the number of special education students increased by one thousand and six, the number. But, the number of special education teachers only increased by two point five positions. We also know that students with disabilities are four times more likely to be given out-of-school suspensions than their non-disabled peers. What role do you think these limited positions play in the district's ability to provide quality special education services for these students? And how could you improve them, given limited funds? We'll start with Ms. Valencourt.
Okay, so, I've seen this graph before. But, just to be, to be clear, this is not cumulative. This is just
In addition to
year over year. And one of the things that, that's, that jumps out to me when I see this is that instead of adding teachers, the, the school system has added temporary employees, but aides. Actually, you guys have them separated out, don't you?
Yes, special education aides and temp, temps.
But, um, in what it's obvious that the school system is, is very short-staffed on qualified, certified special educators. And that has led to the, the real breakdown of the special education services in the department. You know, we saw in the last couple of years, the special educators coming to the boards, you know, in tears about their working conditions and their caseloads. I, it's, it's an appalling situation. It needs to be addressed by hiring an appropriate number of qualified educators. And for the aides and the temporary staff that we do use as supplements, they need to be they, they will, they need to go back to all being Howard County employees. And they need to be trained and they need to have a, an ongoing, continuing education for them so that they are able to service our students as they need to be serviced. When my son was a, in special ed and at Pointer's Run, there were times when he was first getting started that they assigned him an aide that was, you know, really completely unqualified and uninterested in learning. And we need that, those people to be monitored directly by HCPSS staff. And we can't allow this to continue. The, the next budget cycles are gonna be very odd and very difficult. But one of the places we cannot scrimp on is hiring suitable staff for special education.
Thank you. Dr. Liu?
Um, so first, I see that it's a lot of data showing the changes from previous year. So it'd be very helpful if we can have the baseline information. Two thousand and sixteen, so I can see the existing ratio. So based on what I'm seeing here, I can see that there is a variation about additional special education ID each year. So for some years, there are more than three hundred students. And for certain years, they are below one hundred. So I think it's very important, we know what contribute that variation. I also noticed that I see big variation with regarding additional special ed student versus special education aid versus temp employees. So I can see that for most of the years, there are very few additional special ed aides. Except two thousand, twenty twenty. And then for most of the years, we see very large proportion of additional staff are temp employees. That contribute to some issues, because we want long-term relationship, we want more experience and the well-trained teachers. So what I see here is, even the overall, if we lump them together, we see increased special ed teachers plus employees. But the number of increased teachers is very small. So that is an issue. And then about budget, because we will be facing budget challenges, especially post-COVID nineteen. So we really to first use money wisely, increase efficiency. Second, provide trainings to special education staff, make sure that they receive appropriate training, they have the skill side to teach the students. And then, if possible, have more well-trained special education teachers and return them. Because now the temp employees, the ratio is, is much higher. Thank you. Time is up.
Thank you. Yes. Okay, so this is another graph. And I, I thank you for indulging us with looking at our numbers. So this, both of you have a chance to answer. Dr. Liu will go first. This graph shows the number of special education teachers and aides along with special education enrollment. And Howard County is the only county with a significantly higher number of special education aides compared to teachers than other surrounding counties. A common concern we hear from parents is that their children are placed with untrained aides rather than direct contact instruction with the certified teacher. Given budget constraints, how would you work to address our parent concerns?
So this graph compare Howard County with our neighboring counties. So what I can see is, yes, Howard County basically is the only county that we have more special ed teacher aides compared with special ed teachers. I think what we can do is first learn from all the neighboring counties. Learn from their experience, how they handle the budget issue, why they can manage to have more special ed teachers compared with special ed aides. We have been talking about Howard County is the third wealthiest county in the US. And we have almost one billion dollar operating budget. We really need to look deeper into our budget, spend money effectively and wisely, and put money in the classroom. So I think now is a good time for us to learn from the other counties, learn from their experiences. Because at least this data tells us, we are doing things differently from other counties. And other county that not as wealthy, as, as wealthy as us, they still manage to do it. And then it's time for us to learn from them.
Thank you. Ms. Valencourt?
Welcome. Well, one of the things that I would start with is that this is ongoing fallout from the plans of the previous superintendent who, you know, came in with her DMC evaluation of the Howard County Special Education Department and then, and an argument that, that our student, our special ed students should be in front of qualified special education teachers and not just regular classroom teachers. And how she went about, her next steps were to reduce the number of special education teachers we had and increase the number of, of special education aides. I, it was, that was very odd, but we, we are continuing to see a disproportionality between qualified teachers and, and aides. The way that they, these other counties also tend to have a higher percentage of their students identified and served by the Special Education Department. It's always been kind of odd that, you know, Howard County is around, it's less than ten percent of its population has IEPs when, you know, other counties have a significantly higher percentage of their students receiving these services. And I, I think that it's clear that other counties are prioritizing special education more than Howard County is at this point. You know, and twenty years ago, when we moved here, Howard County had the best special ed department. You know, 20 years ago, when we moved here, Howard County had the best special ed department around. And I think they rested on their laurels for a long time. And, you know, it, it sickens me a little bit, but I think part of what has been going on is, and I, is at least in the previous administration, that, um, if we continue to have a fantastic special education department, we're going to continue to attract families who have special education needs. And those are students who are more costly to educate. And maybe we just don't want to have an exceptional special education department. And then we won't attract these more expensive to educate students.
Thank you.
I'm not saying that's a good thing. I'm saying that's a very bad.
These next couple of questions talk about reading. So Ms. Valencourt, you will begin with this. You can start. This slide shows us the percentage of students proficient in English language arts based on the MCAP standardized test. So we know that specific reading instruction ends in the second grade. Yet on anywhere between 50 to 60% of all students are not meeting third grade level expectations on the MCAP, meaning that students might not be able to access their education in later years and continue to fall behind expectations. What do you propose and how do you plan to implement strategies to help students after the third grade? Ms. Valencourt?
Ah, okay. The, um, well, one of the, the, the things that I am most unhappy about that occurred on my watch while I was a board member was the elimination of the middle school standalone reading program. And, you know, there was a time pre-2011 where Howard County had extraordinary reading statistics. And then for reasons that I've never understood, and I voted against, the, um, they said, well, we have this standalone reading program in middle school and none of the other counties do, so we don't need to have it either. Of course, we were doing, we were outperforming all the other counties. So the logic there was, was beyond me. But, um, we're not doing a bang-up job with general education students or special education students in our reading. And we need to go back to standalone reading with, we, you know, we've cut back on, um, the RSTs. And it shows the, that we try to put so much into our students' days and, and instead of focusing on the fundamentals. You know, if they can read, they can access all the other stuff in time. But if they can't read, they can't access any of it. So we need to be, and I hate to use the phrase back to basics, but when it comes to education, if the kids can't read, that is the ballgame. And we need to focus intentionally on standalone reading, reading interventions. And we need to have our professional educators have the full complement of, of, um, programs and curricula that they can, um, and the, the, the work, the caseload so that they can identify which students are struggling, what is working, what isn't working for them, and have the appropriate interventions to be able to apply for each of the kids. It's a, it's a question of intentionality. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Liu?
So this graph show the differences of, um, general ed students with the special ed students regarding their proof, I'm having trouble pronounce that word. Yeah, so, um, basically what I'm seeing here is, yes, there are some gaps in between, but I really want to protect the student's interest in reading. I don't want them to be discouraged by this gap. So what I want to see is another graph about longitudinal data. The progress of the same student when they're in third, fourth, and fifth grade, instead of comparing with other students. Because I think the most important thing is they keep improving. They keep reading. Because what I've observed is sometimes if students are put together with another group of students and then they may be discouraged. Maybe the student was only a little bit behind, but because of that discouragement, the student may lose interest. Then it end up have more achievement gap. So first is I want to protect the interest of the students. And then they need individualized class, individualized reading class. Encourage them to read at home, give them some assignment, and then have group of students who have similar level of reading, let them encourage each other. Because when they find that sense of belongings, when they see student who are similar to them work together, that will help them. Because I think protecting that interest in learning is more important. And also I think we can focus on reading first inside of, um, let them start on more complicated subject. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I had to close the door. Because it was a lot outside. Okay. Next question still has to do with reading. So we know from this graph that reading outcomes for children of, students with disabilities are far below their peers. The Board of Education often discusses this achievement gap, but doesn't really address the fundamentals of reading that are at the core of these outcomes. How would you change that at the board level? I believe it's Dr. Liu's turn first.
Okay, you rephrase that question because I didn't quite get it.
Yes. So reading outcomes for students of disabilities are far below their peers, as seen by the graph. The Board of Education often discusses the achievement gap, but doesn't really address the fundamentals of reading that are at the core of these outcomes. How would you change that at the board level?
Um, so I really think that the board need to focus on the basics of reading. How to encourage student to read and also for student with disabilities. I really think that early detection and early intervention is important. We don't want student to fall behind that much. Because here the graph shows starting from third grade. But how about pre-K, kindergarten, first and the second grade? If, if we can identify those students, if we can intervene early, we can help them. And also each students, they have their own preferred way of learning. When we see a student is struggling, then we need to find another method that the student can learn better. So I really think that the school system also need to communicate with parents more, more frequently. Seek feedback from the parents. If notice anything, communicate directly. Because the earlier that we detect the issue with the students, the earlier we can intervene and help them, then they won't fall behind that much. And I also hope the board will focus on reading. And because reading basically is the fundamental of all this other subject. Even you doing mathematics, always tell my students, read questions carefully. Or what silly mistakes? But what if a student having trouble reading? And the same thing happened to other science and scientific topics and ERA and other courses. So I think for the board, emphasize on teaching. Emphasize on reading and also emphasize on early detection, early intervention. Thank you.
Ms. Valencourt?
Well, one of the things that, um, you know, I mentioned in the last part of this question is that we aren't doing a particularly bang-up job with our general education students either. But the different, the gap is in part because when the students are having issues in general education population, they have access to the RSTs, the reading specialists. And, um, and a variety of specialized reading interventions. And very often, the special education students are just given additional time with their special educator who may not have, I am dedicated training in reading. So one of the things that we, that at, from the board side is that they need to be encouraging or demanding or instructing or directing that the, um, the special education staff have the specialized training that they need to, in order to truly help out the special education students who are struggling with reading. And special education students should have access to the same reading specialists that the, um, the general population has. We don't, we, we, many of you are aware, we've, we backed off on, um, RSTs and MSTs in, I guess, the last, the budget from the year before last. And, um, and I think that was an error. And we're going to start seeing even more repercussions from it. Of course, it's going to all be very difficult to tell what's caused by the COVID crisis and the, you know, the virtual learning. But when they do get back into school and part of catching everybody up should be a significantly enhanced dedicated reading training for the special educators and the general educators. And more time and access for all of the students, but in particular, the special education students.
Great. Thank you. I'm going to go back to the full screen and zoom to see all of your lovely faces. And we're going to switch gears to equity. Ms. Valencourt will take this first. Students with disabilities have often been excluded or have had to fight to get a seat on the table in many recent equity policy drafts, including Policy 1080 on Education Equity and Policy 9020 on Rights and Responsibilities. What do you see as the board's role in ensuring equity for the special education population?
Well, you know, I've been advised in the past that I should be answering these kinds of questions more positively and not be negative. But this is, this is really close to home for me. And it is clear that from the top, um, special education students have been ignored for purposes of the equity discussion. It has, it hasn't even been subtle. It's been blatant. It's been overt. It has been a, it's just a travesty. The, um, education, special education students should be included just like any other subgroup that, especially any subgroup that shows the kinds of numbers that our students in the special education programs have as far as their, their gaps. They should be top in the discussion on equity. The, um, yeah, wow. You know, just in the last couple of years, there have, there have continued to be Supreme Court cases where they've had to go all the way to the top court in the land to say, no, you can't just give special education students the, the bare minimum so that you can check the box that, that you've provided them with an education. I, I'm, I'm truly stunned that this is a conversation that we even have to have. But it's, um, what has to happen is that the people who are elected to the board need to prioritize the, um, the needs of all of our students in their special groups. And special educated, at the special education students should be right up front with the rest of the students in the school system who are having equity issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Liu?
And I think that all the HCPSS committees should be representative of the Howard County population. In other words, I think each community, each subgroup should have representations and should have their worth heard. Because many times, if we are a member of the subgroup, we are aware of the challenges and the situations. But other subgroups, they may not aware of this. So it's very important that each subgroup have their representations on the committees. Can have their voice heard. And the process need to be fair and transparent to everyone. Because I think as a community, as Howard County's big family, we want to work together and want to hear every perspective. I think the goal is to help all children. So it's important that, um, the board keep this in mind for future policymaking and committee hiring process. Make sure we have representative sample of the Howard County population. And actively seeking out, uh, seeking feedback from different stakeholders. Because sometimes certain subgroups may have language barriers, cultural barriers, or other challenges. Then it's in, important that we reach out to them. So that is truly inclusive. We can provide equity to everyone, so all the student can reach their full potential. Regardless of their background. Thank you.
We have time for one more question and then closing remarks. So I believe Dr. Liu will take this one first. It's about accountability and compliance. So the compliance matrix used by the Department of Special Education reads like a guide for a good IEP or individualized education plan used by our students with disabilities. But sometimes many parents believe their IEPs are not being followed. How would you change the way the school system measures compliance? Dr. Liu?
Um, I think education should be individualized. And for compliance, we need to have predetermined protocols to define how we measure outcome. Now also we need to seek input from people who got affected. Parents, students, and also teachers and the staff. Because I really think that the goal is to help the students. So we need to have direct and open communication instead of wait until the end of school year. I really think that the board need to promote frequent direct communication and encourage parents to reach out. At least the board need to listening to the parents, listen to the concerns. And then the parents will be more willing to share their concerns if they think their voice got heard. So I really think that promote direct and open communication and the more frequent communication. Now have predetermined criteria about compliance will help. Because we don't want a post hoc criteria, want to predetermined. And if, um, clearly communicate expectations between parents and the teachers. And what is the goal and how we can help students? Because our ultimate goal is to help the student improve and help them grow and thrive. So if we keep that goal in mind, the compliance issue, I really hope that can be solved by communication. But still, we need to make it clear, have predetermined criteria. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Valencourt?
Well, I'm really glad that you have this as a, as an answer or a question because the first questions that were asked that I didn't get to answer, one of them is for me partially a compliance issue. The, um, I'm sure all of you all are aware that an IEP includes, you know, specific service hours that are supposed to be met. And it's a legal document, a legal requirement. And we have for, you know, decades had to rely on, you know, And we have for, you know, decades had to rely on, you know, on the good faith of the people who are tallying those things up. And what we have discovered way too many times is that some of the service hours are not being met. They're being met by having a, what should be an individual meeting is being, the student is in a group setting that is not really what the IEP calls for. And then they're saying that that counts as compliance. Part of the problem, in my view, is that we have a whole generation of teachers and professionals in our school system who were trained by a school system that did not value true compliance. And they don't, they don't even realize that what they're doing isn't right. So I think what we need is, in addition to a real back to basics training of most of our people, but we also need the, to use the technology that's currently available. There isn't a reason in the world that our educators cannot have a, an app that helps to track in real, in a real time, how much time they spend with each student. And then that can be applied to the calculations on whether their service hours are being met. I think that the cameras in special education classrooms are at some place, that's a place where I deviate from some of our, my endorsement from the teachers' union, but we, we should be able to, oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the wrong screen to figure out whether I'm done. Okay, I'm all done. But using the technology, including cameras, we could calculate to be able to document that the service hours have been complied with.
Thank you. And now we will go to closing remarks. You have two minutes to share anything on your mind to address our audience tonight. And Ms. Valencourt, you will go first.
Okay. When, one of the things that occurred to me during the early question about whether special education students should be able to access GT and AP and honors classes, that's another situation that hits very close to home for me. Because when we were doing the transition meetings to move my son from eighth grade to ninth grade, we were having a terrible time with the, the receiving high school. And they were insisting that he needed to take pre-algebra again because that was the only supported math class. And I was trying to explain that, no, he's supposed to be in the correct math class for him, and then you're supposed to support it. I, we ended up moving so that we would be in a different high school that didn't even have pre-algebra. So that was not an issue. And that, the staff at that high school put him in the appropriate honors classes, and he did take AP courses down the line. But, but we have a culture in our school system too, where the, they don't understand that you can't tell a parent that you, that your child can't be in this class because they have to be in a supported class. Or you're, you know, you, I still hear from parents who are told, no, you, you can't have special ed services if you're in an AP class, which is complete nonsense. And you would think that by now, all of our staff would be aware of this and not continuing to, to tell parents this. I know that Ms. Gunshor is on one of the pictures and like, please, that's one of the big things that you all need to put a stop to. There are laws and rules and common sense around this stuff. And this county needs to get serious about compliance and following the rules. Sorry, gets me a little bit hot. Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Dr. Liu?
Thank you. Thank you, CKAC and HCAST for all of this forum. And thank you, everyone, for watching the candid forum. We're here today because we all value education and we care deeply about our children and our communities. I'm Dr. Yunlu, running for Board of Education in District Five. I believe serving as a BOE member is about preparing children for their bright future, improving their academic achievement, physical well-being, as well as social emotional readiness. As a statistician working for Federal Public Health Agency, I have the experience and the skill set to bring evidence-based decision-making to the BOE. I can provide perspective as a mother, as a statistician, educator, and a community volunteer. Most importantly, I care deeply about our children, our community, and education. I'll make sure that school system spends taxpayers' money wisely to improve education. So even on the BOE requires collaboration, and I constantly promote collaboration and build mutual respect when there is a difference. I value diversity by consciously seeking to understand only through mutual respect. People can truly appreciate diversity, work together collaboratively, and in synergy. Well, Howard County is our new home. We'll work together to make Howard County a better home for all of us, for all our children. And thanks again for having me today.
Thank you. To our audience, I wanted to thank you for hanging out with us for the last two hours to hear from your Board of Education candidates for Howard County Public School System. To our candidates, Dr. Yunlu and Ms. Cindy Valencourt, thank you so much for coming this evening and spending some time with us to answer our questions. I am now going to conclude this evening, get some rest. It's a school night. We all have to get up early in the morning and deal with our crazy, I said crazy, sorry, our children. Could you stop recording? Thank you so much for coming out, everyone. Goodbye.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. And tomorrow you get up at 4:30 because my daughter, she has swimming practice in the morning at five.
Oh, boy.
I won't be up at 4:30. Enjoy. Thank you all.
Thank you.